We call the meeting to order for Wycomico County Council Legislative Session Number 2023-03 for February 7, 2023. Those who like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer for lodge of allegiance, please do.
Our Father.
To our Father. Our leaded meaning thy kingdom come. And to his heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who have trespassed against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. With thy kingdom. The power and the glory forever. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in itself.
Entertained a motion from council to approve the consent agenda?
To move.
Second.
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The consent agenda has been approved.
Yes, it was yours.
This time we have a proclamation to recognize the month of February as Black History Month. Monica Brooks? Nope? Okay. Councilman Hastings will read the proclamation at the podium. So you're representing the NAACP?
Yes.
In place of Monica?
Yes. I'm the first vice president. Proclamation, Black History Month, whereas Black History Month is an annual celebration of achievements by the black community and a time for recognizing the central role of black people in our history, whereas observing Black History Month provides opportunities to gain deeper understanding of African-American heritage and knowledge that centuries of struggles for equality and freedom, whereas Black History Month also celebrates the achievements and contributions that African-Americans have made in shaping our country, society, and communities, and whereas throughout history, to the present day, African-Americans have endured injustices and inequities, that is a moral imperative and that we shed, or that is a moral imperative, that we shed light upon those injustices and inequities and take in action to realize true reforms. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wycomico County Executive and the Wycomico County Council hereby proclaim February as Black History Month in Wycomico County, done the seventh day of February 2023, signed by county executive and all members of the county council. We'd like to first go to picture and then see if you want to take any, and if you'd like to say anything.
Good evening again. My name is Dr. Samuel S. Henry III. I'm the first vice president of the Wycomico County branch of the NAACP, and on behalf of the Wycomico County branch, we just want to say thank you for this proclamation, and I'm looking forward to being an active participant in these meetings going forward. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Ms. Hurley.
Good evening, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. We have one change to the agenda this evening, and that is item number two, resolution number 02-2023 has been removed from the agenda. The county reached a settlement agreement with the two deputies, so that resolution is no longer needed. Okay, the first item on the agenda is the audit presentation by PKS and Company.
Thank you.
Good evening.
If you could, from left to right, just state your name and your position for the audience. Thanks.
Ashley Stern. I'm a partner with PKS and Company.
I'm Mike Kleger, also a partner with PKS and Company.
I'm Ryan Taylor. I'm a supervisor with PKS and Company.
Great, okay. Shit you being here, yeah.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Our purpose this evening is to present the audit results for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2022, mention some of the key highlights for you, and also answer any questions you may have for us today. You should have received today a copy of the bound financial statements, that's the large package, it's about 140 pages, and we will not go through that entirely tonight, but we will cover some of the highlights, and then also there was a handout with the graphs and some financial highlights as well. I'd like to begin with the audit report itself, which is on pages one through four of the bound financial statements. For those of you who have seen or read audit reports in the past, you will notice that this year's audit report is significantly different than last year's. The auditing standards board has completely overhauled the report and also expanded it to four pages rather than about three, I think, in the previous year. The intention of that was to make the users of the audit understand the audit process better, including auditors' responsibilities as well as management's responsibilities for the financial statements. I'm happy to report that our opinion on Wycomico County's financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2022, is what's called unmodified, and this means that the financial statements are presented fairly the financial position of the county in accordance with general accepted accounting principles, and this is often referred to as a clean audit report, and it's the highest level of assurance that we can provide as auditors. The remainder of the audit report covers management's responsibilities and auditor's responsibilities for the financial statements. Our responsibilities as auditors is to gather evidence, perform audit procedures, and to determine that the financial statements are free of any material misstatements. In addition to that, the auditing standards require us to report on the county's internal controls and compliance, and that report is actually at the very end, on pages 140 and 141. Unlike the audit report, this report is not an opinion on internal controls or compliance matters, but rather it's a report of any findings or deficiencies that we noted as a result of our audit testing. We did identify one material weakness related to account reconciliations, and one significant deficiency related to bank reconciliations, which are described further at the end of the report. We did not have any findings as it relates to internal control issues or compliance, I'm sorry, compliance matters with laws or regulations, and so that's the summary of the two reports that are in the bound package, and with that I'll turn it over to Ashley to cover some of the key financial highlights.
Thank you, Mike. So I'm actually going to, rather than flip through the 140 pages in front of you, I'm going to focus entirely on the colorful packet that is in front of you, so that we don't have to flip through everything. I will give you some page references, just for reference, if you happen to be looking at the bound copy later, but we're mainly going to focus on the colorful copy in front of you. We're going to start on page three of that copy. So just some key financial highlights related to both our government-wide and our fund statements. Just as a reminder, within the bound copy, there's actually two sets of financial statements. So you have your government-wide financial statements, and then you have your fund statements. From the government-wide perspective, this includes both our governmental and our business-type activities, as well as our component units, which are the Board of Education and the library. The primary government, so excluding our component units, had an unrestricted net position totaling $55 million, or 30.5% of the net position, and that is a $24.8 million increase from the prior year. Taking a look at the general fund, the general fund is really the main focus of most of our councils that we talk to, so we want to touch further a little bit on that. The unassigned fund balance remains strong, it's just over $60 million, which is 71.57% of total fund balance. That can really be labeled as the health of the overall county. The total general fund revenues increased from 2021 by just over about $9.8 million. Total general fund expenditures, before transfers, increased by about $84,000 from 2021. There was an increase in the fund balance of just over $12 million. This is a combination of both the increase in revenues that we just mentioned, as well as the increase in expenditures. Just for a note, the GFPA, which is kind of the governing body of local governments, recommends that at minimum there be 60 to 90 days of expenditures in your fund balance, so in your unassigned fund balance. I went ahead and calculated that for the county, and we're at about 156 days, but again, that GFPA recommendation is the minimum that we would want to see. Budget to actual revenues can be found, starting on page 115. Revenues were actual, greater-than-budgeted amounts by just under $7 million. The majority of that came from income tax revenue, as well as an increase in our recuration taxes. Actual expenditures were about $14 million less than that of budgeted amounts. On the next slide, you know, a graph can really tell much more than I can describe in words, so we've done a five-year comparison of where the revenues have come from the county over time. We really wanted to focus on property taxes and income taxes over time, so as you can see, property taxes over the past five years have had a steady increase. Same with income taxes over the past five years, we've seen a steady increase in that, and we're really seeing that consistently across all of our governmental clients. Other revenues also saw an increase for 2022 to 32 million. Taking a look at the expenditures by type of the general fund, also, we wanted to show that over time. From 2017 to 2022, there we saw an increase in total salaries to 27 million, an increase in other operating expenses to 49 million, as well as an increase in both our debt service and our Board of Education expenditures. One thing I want to caution is when we're mentioning the Board of Education, debt service related to the Board of Education principal and interest payments on those bonds is actually included in debt service. Added up the total of those, just for your information, so the total of the debt service for the Board of Education and the maintenance of efforts for the Board of Education totals just over 57 million. As I mentioned, the fund balance or the equity of the general fund can truly be seen as the health over time of the county, so we always look at this trend to kind of see where the county is going. If we're seeing a massive decline in our fund balance, you know, that could be indications of, you know, some sustainability issues, but over time, we're really seeing an increase in the fund balance of the county, which is showing a strong financial position. As I mentioned, the financial statements also include those of our business-type activities or enterprise funds. That includes our solid waste, nursing home, airport, as well as a few other funds, but I'm going to focus on those three in front of you. So we have our solid waste revenues increased by about $509,000 from 2021, whereas expenses increased by about $523,000. There was a decrease in the net position or a net loss for solid waste, but that is mainly due to a transfer to our capital projects fund to fund future capital projects. Our airport saw revenues increase by about $343,000 from 2021, whereas expenses actually decreased by $289,000. Overall, we saw a decrease in our net position of about $72,000, or again, a net loss. Our nursing home saw increased revenues from 2021 by about $800,000, with expenditure increases of about $900,000, and again, a decrease in our net position or a net loss of $213,000.
It's pretty good, isn't it?
It's better than it has been.
Yeah, right.
Yep. Actually, speaking of that, we did a five-year trend, so that you can see how each of these funds has done over the last five years. Taking a look at solid waste first, as you can see, revenues have increased over the last five years, and pretty much, solid waste has been pretty steady, whereas we've seen that operating income over the past five years before transfers. So when I mentioned that decrease in net position, that's after transfers to other funds, this operating income, I thought it would be better to look at it before transfers. So overall, we've been, we've been pretty steady in the solid waste enterprise fund. Taking a look at the airport, and I know this has been a topic of discussion over the past few years at council meetings, overall, we did see an increase in our revenue since 2018 of about $200,000 over the past five years, with our change in net position of about $72,000. In that change of net position does include about $3.6 million of depreciation, so this is where we've received capital grants in the past years to do airport projects, whether it be runway extensions, building maintenance, something, something of a capital nature, but we're actually having to take that expense over the life of the asset. So a little bit of a discrepancy in accounting with the timing of when you would see the revenue versus the expenditures. One of those accounting nuances.
When does that actually, when do we remove that out of the enterprise account?
So we typically look at it on a three-year basis, and we want to see if they are budgeting to cover their operating expenses. It's all driven by the budget under the Government Accounting Standards Board. I believe that once we are able to look at this, after all the CARES money and the ARPA money flushes through the airport, I believe, you know, if I had a crystal ball, we would probably be at that point, because we were almost at that point prior to COVID. Taking a look at our new accounting pronouncements that have been implemented within these financial statements, this year we implemented GASB number 87. I know we've been talking about this one for years, but it's finally time for the implementation. This requires the recognition of certain right-of-use assets and right-of-use liabilities. It's where there's no more operating leases, so you won't see rental expenses, that you're seeing basically the amortization of these assets that we have the right to use. It was intended to provide a lot of clarity to financial statements. I'm not sure it's necessarily done that, it tends to be a little bit confusing, but the net difference in the bottom line has been minimal for the county. So once we implemented the accounting standard, the net difference was really minimal. Now that we've taken a look back at the accounting standards that were implemented this past year, we actually have two major accounting standards that are coming out over the next few years. The first is GASB statement number 96, that has to do with subscription-based information technology arrangements. So these would be your IT subscriptions, those would be accounted for in a similar way to those right-of-use assets that I was just mentioning, and that's actually due to be implemented for June 30, 2023. Secondly, we have GASB number 101, which is going to actually revamp the accrued compensated absences or accrued paid time off, accrued vacation, accrued sick time. It's going to revamp that calculation and what would be accounted for in that. I'm expecting that to have a pretty large change with most of our governments, but that's not actually due to be implemented until 2025. Now in front of you also have a smaller packet, the skinnier bound packet, that's our required communications, our auditor communications. It does include two letters. First, our management letter, which is our best practices recommendations for management and for those charged with governance, and the second is our required communication with those charged with governance, or that would be the council. You know, it's pretty much a lot of a standard accounting language. We didn't have any significant disagreements during our audit, we agreed with all the estimate within the financial statements, we didn't identify any non-compliance that would need to be reported, or no other issues that would need to be reported in relation to other matters. So now that I've rambled on about some financial figures, does anybody have any questions?
Refresh me on, please refresh me on what the reserve fund was. Is it 50-some million, 60 million?
55.
The fund balance?
Fund balance, 57, and our reserve fund. That includes our operating money plus our reserve fund, correct, altogether?
Correct, so total fund balance, which would be the operating and the reserve is 84 million, of that 60 is that unassigned fund balance I was mentioning.
So that's, that's what we would call the reserve fund?
Correct, correct. So the other categories would be, have different reservations on them, whether it be because they're in non-spendable form, they're restricted for certain matters, they're either committed to a specific expenditure, or they could have an assignment of what they would need to be spent for. So those would all be the restrictions or the reservations, and then unassigned would be used for general operations.
So we get approximately 10 or 12 million dollars a year in what they call the disparity grant?
Mm-hmm.
Correct, and that's kind of maintained about the same over the years?
It has.
It's been consistent, yeah.
Yeah, so where would the county be if we went back six years or eight years and took that away? Would we be broke?
I would need a really large calculator, but I...
The states give us, you know, 60 or so million dollars in the past six years, 70 million, so if you took that away, where will we be?
Break even, I guess, from an unassigned fund balance. I mean, as far as the other categories she was mentioning, they're kind of detailed on page 40, kind of those other categories, but yeah, in your questionnaire, I guess it would eliminate your unassigned fund balance roughly, if it's roughly, because that's where we're at currently, about 60 million.
So we're just, we're just banking money from the state. The state gives us free money from other people's taxpayer dollars from across the rest of the state, we're just taking it and sticking it in account.
Some portion of it, correct, correct.
Section in referencing significant risk, et cetera, are you finding that that's pretty much something that you're seeing across the board in other industries as well, whereas short staff, post-COVID, things of that nature?
The significant risk paragraph is actually a new paragraph for this year, where we're required to identify or put into writing what our significant risks are. We've always had to identify those risks. They're pretty comparative to what we're seeing other governments have. It's revenue recognition, journal entries, of course, are a risk, as well as miscoding of accounts with a budget-driven finance function. So we really are seeing that across all, really across all industries in the past couple of years, but it is new, new to the letter. Thank you, thank you so much. We really do appreciate you having us here, and if you have any questions after the fact, please feel free to reach out.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is resolution number 14-2023. This is to authorize a supplemental appropriation from contingency to the Collective Bargaining Administration for $84,500, and to remove the workers' compensation settlement offset from the calculated accidental disability payment for two retired deputies beginning March 2023, and we have Mr. Paul Wilber here, the county attorney, if there are any questions.
Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution 14-2023? So moved. Second. Any questions? Mr. Wilber, is this funding that was supposed to be, once we make this payment, and this is to settle this issue there, is this going to be reimbursed? What was the discussion in reference to that the last time we met?
I think the finance office is determining which funds will ultimately pay the settlement, and that's a process that's ongoing right now.
Both inside and out of the county, you mean?
No, inside the county finance office, within the county budget.
Is there a timeline? Do we know when they're going to be paid?
If this is passed tonight, then the finance office will be notified tomorrow morning, and in the next run of checks, the settlement money will come out, which should be within, say, 10 days, week to 10 days, I believe.
Yes. If I may, on your question, John, so my understanding is that the way our pension is currently written, this cannot come from our pension or our disability funds. We would have to make the determination, we as administration and council, to change those documents, to make this a permanent change, to allow this to come out of that fund. I do not know the legality, and I have not talked to the legal counsel on the pension side, whether or not the settlement portion, because it's happening now before those documents changed, whether or not that could ever be reverted back, but the future payments that are in the settlement, that is the amount that has been netted off, I believe those would be allowed to come out of that fund in the future if we make those changes. But again, that is a process that would have to be done by council and administration to change all of those documents, and it's not, we would not be back in, on the next meeting in February to make those changes. It's a, it's a process. So the reason why the amount that we have is more than the settlement is that finance put in the payments for the remainder of the fiscal year out of the general fund to be sure that we had sufficient funds to pay that payment for the next five months.
Right.
Because if we didn't, if we don't get the documents changed, I need a funding mechanism, and the funding mechanism is this budget amendment.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of resolution 14-2023, say aye. Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Thank you. Okay, next for your consideration is resolution number 15-2023. This is to designate Donna Pierce O'Hara as the Retirement Plan Administrator pursuant to Article 9 of the Retirement Plan for Employees of Wycomico County and the Board of Education of Wycomico County, and we have Mr. Bunky Luffman here, Director of Administration, if there are any questions.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution 15-2023? Motion? Got a motion? Second? Motion's second. Discussion? Any questions for Mr. Luffman? All those in favor of resolution 15-2023, say aye. Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, next is resolution number 16-2023. This is to change the resident agent registered with the State Department of Assessment and Taxation from John D. Posoda to Tom S.G. Luffman Jr., Director of Administration.
Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution 16-2023?
To move.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next item for businesses, resolution number 17-2023. This is confirming the reappointment of John R. Monar as Director of the Department of Information Technology.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution 17-2023?
To move.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next item for businesses, resolution number 17-2023. This is confirming the reappointment of Jamie Riley as Director of the Wycomico County Local Management Board, also known as the Wycomico Partnership for Families and Children.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution 18-2023?
To move.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is resolution number 18-2023, confirming the reappointment of Jamie Riley as Director of the Wycomico County Local Management Board, also known as the Wycomico Partnership for Families and Children.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution 18-2023?
To move.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is resolution number 20-2023, confirming the reappointment of Paul D. Wilber as the County Attorney in the law firm of Webb, Cornbrooks, Wilber, Douse, Mathers, and Illuminati LLP, to service the county's Department of Law.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution 20-2023?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is resolution number 21-2023, confirming the appointment of Christopher B. Davidson as Deputy Director of the Department of Aviation.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution 21-2023?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
The next item for consideration is resolution number 22-2023. This is to amend the fiscal year '23 fee schedule for recreation, parks, and tourism to include new fees for Harman Field, and those new fees are listed in Exhibit A attached to the resolution, and I believe Mr. Steve Miller here, Director of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism, is here to answer any questions.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution 22-2023?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is resolution number 21-2023, confirming the appointment of Christopher B. Davidson as Deputy Director of the Department of Aviation.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution 21-2023?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
The next item for consideration is resolution number 22-2023. This is to amend the fiscal year '23 fee schedule for recreation, parks, and tourism to include new fees for Harman Field, and those new fees are listed in Exhibit A attached to the resolution, and I believe Mr. Steve Miller here, Director of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism, is here to answer any questions.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution 22-2023?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
The next is resolution number 21-2023, confirming the appointment of Christopher B. Davidson as Deputy Director of the Department of Aviation.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution 21-2023?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
The next item for consideration is resolution number 22-2023. This is to amend the fiscal year '23 fee schedule for recreation, parks, and tourism to include new fees for Harman Field, and those new fees are listed in Exhibit A attached to the resolution, and I believe Mr. Steve Miller here, Director of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism, is here to answer any questions.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution 22-2023?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
The next is resolution number 21-2023, confirming the appointment of Christopher B. Davidson as Deputy Director of the Department of Aviation.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution 21-2023?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
The next is resolution number 21-2023, confirming the appointment of Christopher B. Davidson as Deputy Director of the Department of Aviation.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution 21-2023?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
The next is resolution number 21-2023, confirming the appointment of Christopher B. Davidson as Deputy Director of the Department of Aviation, also known as the Wycomico Partnership for Families and Children.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution 18-2023?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
The next is resolution number 20-2023, confirming the reappointment of Paul D. Wilber as the County Attorney in the law firm of Webb, Cornbrooks, Wilber, Douse, Mathers, and Illuminati LLP, to service the county's Department of Law.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution 20-2023?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
The next is resolution number 20-2023, confirming the reappointment of Paul D. Wilber as the County Attorney in the law firm of Webb, Cornbrooks, Wilber, Douse, Mathers, and Illuminati LLP, to service the county's Department of Law.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution 20-2023?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?[587.22]
Over the years.
It has.
It's been consistent, yeah.
Yeah, so where would the county be if we went back six years or eight years and took that away? Will we be broke?
I would need a really large calculator, but I.
The states give us, you know, sixty or so million dollars in the past six years, seventy million, so if you took that away, where will we be?
Break even, I guess, from an unassigned fund balance. I mean, as far as the other categories she was mentioning, they're kind of detailed on page forty, kind of those other categories, but yeah, in your questionnaire, I guess it would eliminate your unassigned fund balance roughly, because that's where we're at currently, about sixty million.
Okay.
So we're just banking money from the state. The state gives us free money from other people's taxpayer dollars from across the rest of the state. We're just taking it and sticking it in account.
Some portion of it, correct, right.
Section in referencing significant risk, et cetera. Are you finding that that's pretty much something that you're seeing across the board in other industries as well, whereas short staff, post-COVID, things of that nature?
The significant risk paragraph is actually a new paragraph for this year where we're required to identify or put into writing what our significant risks are. We've always had to identify those risks. They're pretty comparative to what we're seeing other governments have. It's revenue recognition, journal entries, of course, are a risk, as well as miscoding of accounts with a budget-driven finance function. So we really are seeing that across all, really across all industries in the past couple of years, but it is new to the letter. Thank you so much. We really do appreciate you having us here, and if you have any questions after the fact, please feel free to reach out.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is resolution number fourteen dash twenty twenty-three. This is to authorize a supplemental appropriation from contingency to the Collective Bargaining Administration for eighty-four thousand five hundred dollars and to remove the workers' compensation settlement offset from the calculated accidental disability payment for two retired deputies beginning March twenty twenty-three. And we have Mr. Paul Wilber here, the county attorney, if there are any questions.
And a motion from counsel to approve resolution fourteen dash two thousand twenty-three. So moved. Second. Any questions? Mr. Wilber, is this funding that was supposed to be, once we make this payment, and this is to settle this issue there, is this going to be reimbursed? What was the discussion in reference to that the last time we met?
I think the finance office is determining which funds will ultimately pay the settlement. And that's a process that's ongoing right now.
Both inside and out of the county, you mean?
No, inside the county finance office, within the county budget.
Is there a timeline? Do we know when they're going to be paid?
If this is passed tonight, then the finance office will be notified tomorrow morning, and in the next run of checks, the settlement money will come out. It should be within, say, ten days, week to ten days, I believe.
Yes. If I may, on your question, John. So my understanding is that the way our pension is currently written, this cannot come from our pension or disability funds. We would have to make the determination, we as administration and council, to change those documents, to make this a permanent change, to allow this to come out of that fund. I do not know the legality, and I have not talked to the legal counsel on the pension side, whether or not the settlement portion, because it's happening now before those documents changed, whether or not that could ever be reverted back, but the future payments that are in the settlement, that is, the amount that has been netted off, I believe those would be allowed to come out of that fund in the future if we make those changes. But again, that is a process that would have to be done by council and administration to change all of those documents, and it's not, we would not be back on the next meeting in February to make those changes. It's a process. So the reason why the amount that we have is more than the settlement is that finance put in the payments for the remainder of the fiscal year out of the general fund to be sure that we had sufficient funds to pay that payment for the next five months.
Right.
Because if we don't get the documents changed, I need a funding mechanism, and the funding mechanism is this budget amendment.
Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of resolution fourteen dash two thousand twenty-three, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next for your consideration is resolution number fifteen dash twenty twenty-three. This is to designate Donna Pierce O'Hara as the Retirement Plan Administrator pursuant to Article Nine of the Retirement Plan for Employees of Wacomico County and the Board of Education of Wacomico County. And we have Mr. Bunky Luffman here, Director of Administration, if there are any questions.
Can a motion approve resolution fifteen dash two thousand twenty-three? Motion? Got a motion? Second?
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. Any questions for Mr. Luffman? All those in favor of resolution fifteen dash two thousand twenty-three, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, next is resolution number sixteen dash twenty twenty-three. This is to change the resident agent registered with the State Department of Assessment and Taxation from John D. Posoda to Tom S. G. Luffman, Jr., Director of Administration.
Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution sixteen dash two thousand twenty-three? So moved. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next item for business is resolution number seventeen dash twenty twenty-three. This is confirming the reappointment of John R. Monar as Director of the Department of Information Technology.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution seventeen dash two thousand twenty-three? So moved. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, next is resolution number eighteen dash twenty twenty-three, confirming the reappointment of Jamie Riley as Director of the Wacomico County Local Management Board, also known as the Wacomico Partnership for Families and Children.
Entertained a motion to approve resolution eighteen dash two thousand twenty-three? So moved. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is resolution number nineteen dash twenty twenty-three, confirming the reappointment of Lori A. Carter as Director of the Department of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development.
And a motion from council to approve resolution nineteen dash two thousand twenty-three? So moved. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is resolution number twenty dash twenty twenty-three, confirming the reappointment of Paul D. Wilber as the County Attorney in the law firm of Webb, Cornbrooks, Wilber, Douse, Mathers, and Illuminati LLP to service the county's Department of Law.
And a motion to approve resolution twenty dash two thousand twenty-three? So moved. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, next is resolution number twenty-one dash twenty twenty-three, confirming the appointment of Christopher B. Davidson as Deputy Director of the Department of Aviation.
And a motion to approve resolution twenty-one dash two thousand twenty-three? So moved. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, the next item for consideration is resolution number twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three. This is to amend the fiscal year twenty-three fee schedule for recreation, parks, and tourism to include new fees for Harmon Field, and those new fees are listed in Exhibit A attached to the resolution. And I believe Mr. Steve Miller here, Director of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism, is here to answer any questions.
And motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash two thousand twenty-three? So moved. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. Would you like to make any comments, Steve? Because I know you've been working hard. Okay, good.
The next item for business is resolution number twenty-three dash twenty twenty-three. This is to amend the grant award from the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention due to funding limitations to the Police Accountability, Community, and Transparency Grant Program, formerly entitled Edward J. Burr Memorial Justice Assistance Grant to the amount eleven thousand five hundred dollars. And you'll see in the agenda packet, resolution number one fifty-one dash twenty twenty-two, that approved the grant funding on November the first of two thousand twenty-two. That source of grant funding in the resolution has changed now to, or changed from, the Edward J. Burr Memorial Justice Assistance Grant to the Police Accountability, Community, and Transparency Grant Program, and this resolution is authorizing that change.
Okay. Entertained a motion to approve resolution twenty-three dash two thousand twenty-three? So moved. Second. Any discussion? Yes. Evening, Captain.
Thank you. Is this just a, is this a title change, or what is the?
What this is, they're just changing, we were approved for the grant, I was in front of you back in October, you approved the grant before it's accepted. The state has approved it, they're just changing which grant they're going to fund it through.
Any other questions? All those in favor of resolution twenty-three two thousand twenty-three, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
Next is resolution number twenty-four dash twenty twenty-three, authorizing the county executive to accept the local assistance and tribal consistency grant award from the U.S. Department of the Treasury in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. And we have Pam Owen here, Director of Finance, if there are any questions.
Okay. Entertained a motion to approve resolution twenty-four dash two thousand twenty-three? So moved. Second. Any discussion? Yes, Josh?
I just wanted to ask if you could provide further clarity, so a hundred thousand dollars coming from a random federal bunch of.
We got notified that, hey, you can qualify for a hundred thousand dollars from a random federal if you fill out this application. And the application is on the same website as we're doing the American Rescue Plan stuff. So it was more of, do you want a hundred thousand dollars or not? If you want it, please fill out this information by January thirty-first. There is only one restriction on the funding, we can't use it for lobbying. And the intention of the way the resolution is written is that the funding is supposed to come in two tranches, unlike the American Rescue. They don't really tell you when those two tranches are happening, so I can't tell you when we're going to budget it. So until we get it in the bank account, we're going to treat it the same way we have treated the American Rescue funds. When it comes in, it'll be set up in a liability account, and we'll come back to council and specifically ask as to, and notify you and ask you, this is how we would like to spend it.
So it'll be set up in a completely separate fund?
So it's not, no, it's part of the general fund. It'll be part of the general fund, like American Rescue, but the way we, and the auditors approved this treatment, is that until we appropriate it, it does not go in as revenue. So a lot of our grants, the moment we get the cash, we treat it as revenue. The difference between American Rescue and this as well, we're saying that until we have appropriated it, it's not revenue, because we don't want to recognize it in this fiscal year, recognize a hundred thousand dollars, but then have the expense three fiscal years from now, and forget, we want the timing of the revenue and the expense to be in the same fiscal year.
All right. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. Hi, Mr. Mitchell. Good evening.
This is a legislative bill, twenty twenty-three oh one. It is an act to amend the purchasing manual, section four A two, purchasing procedures, small purchases to increase the amount of purchase not required to be competitively bid from under a hundred thousand, where it is currently, to five hundred, one thousand, to under five thousand. And now for, upon recommendation, county executive purchasing department, section one being acted or named by county council, city, Maryland Legislative Session, purchasing manual, section four A two, purchasing procedures, small purchases hereby amended to increase the amount of purchase not required to be competitively bid from under one thousand dollars to under five thousand dollars, as hereby approved and adopted, and then it'll go through the standard sixty days. This particular bill, if passed, will not be codified in the code so that it can be amended by resolution, bill amendment, or budget amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Entertained a motion from council to introduce legislative bill zero-one two thousand twenty-three? So moved. Second.
Second.
Motion second. Good evening.
Sir?
If you could state your name for the public, not everybody knows you.
Pete Matthews, General Services Supervisor, Wacomico County.
Bunky Luffman, Director of Administration for Wacomico County.
Julie Jarodino, County Executive.
All right. Would you like to go, Pete? I usually like to.
Well, it's, I think everybody knows with the price of things these days that trying to buy any real supplies or get a minor service done for under a thousand dollars is not really feasible anymore. And the time it takes to get three bids, have three vendors show up to give you a price, if you save a hundred dollars, it's cost you four hundred. That's really what this is all about, is being able to do business without having our hands tied and wasting our time chasing a hundred dollars here and there. That's the crux of it.
Questions for anybody here? Do you ever have the opportunity where you don't get three bids? Because there's not three people that qualify?
Not so much as not three people to qualify. Oftentimes, I find three will show up, but you'll only get quotes from two. Or two will show up, and you never hear from the third one.
Kind of like job interviews?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Sort of like. And what I have found in the last two years, some of these vendors get tired of giving you prices because they know you're going to get three prices, and no matter how urgent the situation is, it just takes too long to get something done. And we're not talking about a lot of money.
Is five thousand enough?
It's a good start.
Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor of the introduction of legislative bill zero-one two thousand twenty-three, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, introduction passes. Mrs. Hurley, this will be.
Yeah, we can, the next step is a public hearing, and we can hold that on March the seventh at six P.M.
Excellent.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Pete. Thank you. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments that you'd like to make, come to the podium, please, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Do us a favor, we have a lot of people here tonight. If you have any comments you'd like to make, try not to repeat what maybe someone else has said previously, so that we can all manage to leave at a respectable hour tonight. And maybe no one has anything to say.
That was bad choice. Just for, just to.
She's at the podium.
President Cannon, members of the county council, good evening. My name is Mary Ashanti. I'm a resident of Wacomico County. I think, first, I thank God for the opportunity to speak here tonight. The murder of Tyree Nichols further opened up the wounds of mistrust for law enforcement agencies throughout this nation. As a result, throughout Maryland and the rest of the nation, folks are seeking justice. Therefore, we urge lawmakers to revisit legislative bill twenty twenty-two dash zero four, reference law enforcement review wars to strengthen their power with subpoena power and prevent control of the police accountability board by law enforcement agencies. On a federal level, we urge Congress to pass the George Floyd Justice and Policing Act this year to hold law enforcement legally accountable for misconduct, brutality, and murder of people in their care. Also to improve transparency through data collection and reform police training, policies, and culture. On a local level, we ask the county executive and county council to hold the police accountability accountable for transparency to the public, have them come to a work session to present their progress. And lastly, this is in reference to the budget. I attended a Board of Education meeting, I think, last week, and what was reported is that resource officers are paid by the sheriff's department, and that the Board of Education refund the sheriff's office. So this money, this refunding of money to the sheriff's office takes away from student services, such as more social workers, nurses, behavior specialists, and et cetera. And the other question is, if this money is refunding the sheriff's office, and you all have already put in the budget for the resource officers to be paid, then this is extra money for the sheriff's office. And you can see how there needs to be a change. Either the Board of Education pays for it, or not refund the sheriff's office. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Shoney.
Good evening, council. My name is Monica Brooks, and I am president of Wacomico County NAACP. And for the sake of time, and for John Cannon's comment, I'm not going to repeat, but what she said, Mary Ashanti, but what I want to add on to that is that one of the things that the police accountability, well, no, I'm sorry, the police accountability, community, and transparency grant that was discussed on this evening, we would like transparency in that area, to see where those funds are being, how they're being utilized in the areas of transparency. It's supposed to be utilized for community engagement, to help with, in lawlessness, and training and safety for law enforcement, and encouraging communities, encouraging the communities that they serve. So we'd like to see how those funds are being utilized. In addition, I'd like to address the Police Accountability Board. I have been sending emails, I have no idea how to contact them, so if you all know, it would be nice that if people can reach out to them. I know that their meetings are every third Wednesday, but in between times, we've not seen any reports from them, we've not seen any outcomes of any kind, and don't know where to find them. And they've been in existence since the summer.
Police Accountability Board is through the executive office. I would love to have a conversation about that, because I have the same questions.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And lastly, the dispensaries. NAACP is not in support of ending this dispensary system. We get almost between three hundred thousand to, almost to a million dollars from this. We have people employed in this area. Sometimes the money's up, and sometimes it's down, but we already know that we are heavily dependent upon state funding, and so taking that money out of the county's budget, out of the general fund, would not be to our benefit. And we're very concerned about where these stores will be placed. How many are there going to be? This is taking the limits off of the number that they can have. Right now, it's controlled, but at some point, it could be twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, and where are those going to be placed? And so we are very concerned about that. So we hope that you don't change that system and leave the dispensary system the way it is. Thank you.
All right.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Luke Anzalot. I live outside the city limits of Salisbury, but I reside in District One of the county, which is why I'm speaking before the council, and not, the county council, not the city council, Salisbury City Council on this matter. I'm speaking on behalf of not only my generation, but also on behalf of everyone when I say this. The cost of rent in this county, especially the closer you get to Salisbury, is way too high. I scoured through apartments dot com to make sure I wasn't spreading misinformation, and it's true. If you don't have eleven to fourteen hundred dollars to spend on rent every month for a one-to-two bedroom, you're out of luck. One must make around twenty-six dollars an hour to comfortably afford rent around here. Our third and fourth largest employers are Purdue and Walmart. Next to no one working for those companies is making twenty-six dollars an hour. The farm, the fair market rent for a one-bedroom apartment in this area is eight hundred and sixty-one dollars. That's close to what the Ross Building plans to charge each student per room in one of their four-bedroom options. That means if their student housing was, were priced, rather, like a regular apartment, depending on the layout, they'd be asking for somewhere between three thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars and three thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars per month. The fair market rate for a four-bedroom apartment in this area is one thousand six hundred thirty-five. Thanks in part to the outlandish rent costs in this area, I'm willing to bet that a large portion of the people currently residing in the student housing offered in this area, such as the Flats, the Gathering, University Orchard, et cetera, aren't even students. Those are people trying to save money on housing, which is essential for survival. I ask this council to please ask, please act, as we cannot continue to choose profits over people. I know many people, my aides, who plan to leave this area simply because the cost of rent does not equate to the lifestyle offered in this area. Thank you for your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Alex Scott, owner of The Brick Room, right across the street. I'm here about the dispensary system. First, I want to congratulate all of you on your appointments. I know how hard it is to run a campaign, so I thank you for that. I know it's a thankless job. Also, congratulations on the health of the county we just heard about. It's glad to know that we're doing so well. So, and if you look around the room, you'll see quite a few business owners, restaurateurs. I'm sure many of you know them and frequent them, and I'm sure a lot of you appreciate the tax benefits and the revenues that we all support, that we all supply you. I think that, like any other business in Wacomico County, we want the ability to get our product from a distributor like anyone else. I think it's long past due, and I think everyone here agrees. Now, it is worth noting the disparity grant that Joe, that you brought up. I understand, you know, we're a county that doesn't do well, but it's because we have a lot of business owners and entrepreneurs that see how we run, and I think that, you know, they shy away from coming here. And I think that that's worth noting, that if we no longer will want to need the disparity grant, that we need to make steps into enticing more business owners to come here and do business. How we get our revenue right now, it matters, and the way that we're currently doing it is borderline theft. It's double taxation on a lot of the work that we all do. Allowing us to access the free market like anyone else is really going to help struggling businesses. It's going to encourage more to come here, and I think if you look at all the counties that surround us, if they're doing it, there must be a reason, and I think it's time that we follow suit. So thank you.
Good evening. Robert Taylor, county resident for fifty-one point five years now. Time marches on. I disagree with the last speaker, and I'm pretty sure that there's others here that don't think that the dispensary system should be changed at all. And certainly not this year without a much more comprehensive analysis than has been made. As you know, I think I've sent you information on this, about our disparity grant. As you know, I think I've sent you information on this about our disparity grant, pointing out that several members of our Wycomico County delegation to the General Assembly over the past, oh, five or six years, since I've been following this pretty closely, have raised concerns that the county stands out among the 10 counties in Maryland that receive disparity grant funding. There are only 10, five on the shore, five across the bay, for several reasons. First of all, we're the only one that has a tax cap that has resulted, property tax revenue cap, I should say, that has resulted in a very much lower tax rate than those other counties have. And also, we are the next to the lowest in the per capita property tax revenue. Now, property taxes don't affect directly the disparity grant amount. It's a formula that's based on income factors. But the concern is that you've got the tax cap that I just mentioned, you've got the fact that we do not have a county transfer tax. Of those 10 counties that I mentioned that get disparity grant funding, there's only one other, that's Somerset, that doesn't have a county property transfer tax. On top of that, a couple of years ago, we decided, let's say we, the council, the former council, decided to give a quite substantial subsidy for property development by waiving property taxes. So we're adding, we're adding things that make this county stand out to legislators from across the bay who are going to say, now, if we're giving them all that money, and as we pointed out in a response to a question by Mr. Hastings, we're essentially using it to build up our reserve fund. Somebody's going to look at that and say, look, tax cap, low tax rate, no transfer tax, and why do they need all this money? Baltimore City, they get a disparity grant. Everybody up there is a Democrat, folks. They're liable to start looking at and saying, now, look, we need that money more than they do. We're trying harder. The property tax rate in Baltimore City is over $2. Ours is 90 cents. So there's one heck of a difference there when you stop, stop to look at it and put yourself in the, in the position of a legislator in Baltimore City, or for that matter, Garrett and Allegheny County, which also get disparity grant funding. So anyway, you've heard, you've heard my story on that. I was surprised, one reason I came tonight was to hear what the unassigned fund balance was in this FY 2022 audit. 60 million plus, I think, was what was said. In FY 2022, our disparity grant funding was just shy of 12 million dollars. Now, the year before FY 2021, we had about 52 million dollars in that reserve fund. So it's gone up by 8 million plus or minus. Well, if you take off the 11 million, almost 12 million dollars from that, our amount would have actually gone down. And the question I think was asked about, well, how about if we look at former years? Well, I've done that. And in the last five years, the total funding of the disparity grant has been almost 55 million dollars. So if you take off this past year, the 12 million, which bring, would theoretically bring that reserve fund down to about 48 million, and you take off another 55 million, guess what? You're in the hole for some, some millions of dollars. Now, I know that wouldn't have happened because we have to have a balanced budget. So we would have cut expenditures. But that's the point to make, is we're dependent on that disparity grant to have any kind of a reasonable reserve fund. And if we lose that or any part of it, there'll be a big difference in our budgeting. I've covered that. I want to just cover a couple of other things. There's a lot to be said on this. And I think one, I have to say it this way. I think there's been a lot of malarkey spouted from this podium on some things. We need to get to the bottom of it. We need to make an analysis. I went up to Delmar over the weekend and did some shelf pricing in one of the liquor stores up there. And of the items I priced, and it wasn't a whole lot, I've sent you information on this. I don't mean to say I went through and wrote down every single thing in the store. But from what I did do, small sample, it indicates to me that at least shelf price, we're about the same. Don't know all the reasons for that, but when you look at the numbers, they're pretty close. However, then you put the 9% sales tax on, and that's what drives it up here and gives them the real advantage. That's not going to change. You can have all the liquor stores you want in this county. You're not going to change Delaware's tax laws. And you're not going to change the Maryland 9% law. Ain't going to happen. So that's, that's one aspect of it. So the other thing is, let's look at it from the standpoint of the wholesale market that restaurants and bars have to buy through. How competitive would that be if they could buy from wholesale distributors rather than through the dispensary system? I don't know. I don't know the answer to that, but I, seat of my pants tells me that there's not much of a difference. But let's get, let's get the data. Let's do a hard analysis and not just somebody stand up here and say, oh, it would be 15% less. Because it might not be. Might be more than that. But if I were a betting man, I'd bet less than that. So that's my point on it. Let's not do anything until we have a comprehensive study, and that's going to take more than a couple of weeks, probably some months, which essentially means, if you do anything at all, ask for any kind of legislation, delay it for a year. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Hello. I just want to make a comment in favor of the Sunday hunting. I've got three young boys. I want to keep them outdoors in the woods as much as we can, keep them off the video games. It's tough to do that during the week. You know, we've got school, we've got work. So having that extra day on Sunday would make a big difference, would help us out a lot. Also want to point out that I think it should be the same, public land and private land. The guys on public land are already at a disadvantage, so I don't see why we give them one less day. Just even playing field and let us get out there as much as we can. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Hello. My name's Kevin Dennis, Wycomico County resident for many years. I'm here to stand in opposition of changing the liquor board as well. I have three points to make. One is about the process, and two are about the retail. I'm not going to speak to the licenses or the licensees tonight. I'm going to speak to the retail side. Ms. Erdana, when she presented her desire for a bill last work session, I watched it multiple times just to try and understand it. In the presentation, she said, I represent them because they put me in office. Later in the meeting, the gentleman from Cheers was challenged by one of the board members with a comment, you are assuming that you're going to get one of these licenses. So what I hear between these two comments, when I put them together in my own mind, is that she's presenting this bill for the benefit of a few businessmen who helped her get in office, to use her own words, and that the path going forward should this bill pass and the changes be made, has already been determined for the select few. She doesn't appear to be paying attention to the rest of the constituents who voted to help her put in office. In this particular situation, it took many more votes than a handful of well overdue businessmen to get her in office. I was one of those who helped put her and some of you guys in office as well. My next point involves being a consumer and a collector of whiskey. I've been collecting whiskey for the better part of nine years now, and for the last 10 to 12 years, bourbons and tequilas, among others, have become very popular to collect. Producing companies have found that if they produce annual limited release bottles of special production runs, that the public will pay some higher prices for them and clamor to buy them, which is very true. And COVID just exacerbated that to great limits. These collector bottles, due to their popularity, have now spurred a secondary market not at all associated to retail locations for these bottles, for these bottles, as they are hard to find. Prices in the secondary market are ridiculous and unaffordable. Businessmen in different regions of this state and other states around us and in the country have begun to participate in the secondary market pricing, or market price gouging, and routinely price these bottles at a markup of 500 to 1,000% and sometimes more. The pictures that I sent out to you guys are examples of a Worcester County liquor store taken last year at some point. None of the bottles in that picture, which you see prices from 399 to 1,200 dollars. None of those bottles have a manufacturer suggested retail of more than 100 dollars. So at MSRP, they are all under 100 dollars. And that is Worcester County. That is most of the stores in Worcester County, most of the stores in Lower Delaware, most of the stores in Dorchester County, some, most of the stores in Talbot County. And so Wycomico stands alone in the pricing structure in this area of the state as a, as a location that provides retail pricing for these allocated bottles. And they are available, they're put in the case, you can walk in and buy them when they're here. And to bring it closer to a regular purchase, let's look at a bottle of, a regular bottle of whiskey. I'm not talking, I'm not going to name the brand because we're not here to promote the brand, but a regular, very common bottle of whiskey. In Virginia, it sells for 25. In a particular store in Worcester County, it's 29. And Delmar and Salisbury are both about 24. And it would seem to me, there's a benefit to me as a consumer. Again, I can't speak against the licensees and the restaurateurs, but as a consumer, it's a benefit to me to buy in Wycomico County. I also know that there are people that come from North Carolina and many people that come from the Western Shore to buy these bottles here in Wycomico County because of the price structure. If you were to take away the, well, I'm going to get to that point here, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to jump ahead too far. And to speak of the tax, the 9% tax, if you're going to drive to Delmar to buy a bottle of something, your savings are going to be negated in the cost of gasoline to go to Delmar. So I don't see the 9% as an argument because the cost of gas to drive up there takes away your savings anymore, and gas is expensive. And to go back to collector bottles, those collector bottles that you see in the picture have been offered in Wycomico at or near the retail price. So as a consumer's collector, I have to look at the difference between what happens when it's a private company and what happens when it's a county run or state run. It would seem to me, my prices will go up when it's a private company, as evidenced by 95% of the private stores, Worcester, in Worcester, Dorchester, and the lower two counties of Delaware. I've excluded Somerset because, as we all know, they're in a bit of transition right now, and it wouldn't be fair because they've eliminated this, there's changes, they've had other issues, so I didn't bother with Somerset for this. And then, as I look at this example, it comes to mind how very few government programs are actually a win-win proposition for the average consumer. The liquor stores cost us no money as a county, and they are run independently. They maintain fair and equitable prices on those bottles that otherwise would be marked up, that 500 to 1,000% as you see. And they also kick in near a million dollars to the county budget annually. And the way I look at it, a million dollars is still a lot of money to just walk away from as a county. And I bet if we took those funds and earmarked them from the liquor system to community projects, a million dollars would be a substantial amount to fund open air projects and playgrounds for neighborhoods that might need safe areas for children to play in. Might be worth considering. I mean, if, if, if we don't need it, quote unquote, let's use it for the good of the community and still utilize it to better our communities. A lot of neighborhoods could use playgrounds and open air spaces. A lot of improvement to the community could be done on a million dollars annually, give or take. I realize sometimes it's just. My third and final point is this. As evidenced by the state of Virginia, where the entire state is run with a central liquor commission, and all the stores are state run, they are able to maximize their purchasing cost savings by buying in large quantities and warehousing because they're supplying the entire state. It would seem to me that rather than coming at the liquor board system as an adversary and trying to diminish their role in the purchasing of liquor for the county, they should have tried to work with the liquor board to leverage the single greatest power we harness as an entire county, and that is single point purchasing. Volume purchases can be negotiated with the liquor suppliers at larger case amounts that restaurants and other people can't warehouse because they can't, that, you know, the liquor laws are now, you have to buy and store it on premises. Well, I don't know too many restaurants that are going to buy 25 cases of a particular liquor to get the better price. So there is no logical way that someone who runs a restaurant could get a better price for a single case that you couldn't get by leveraging your purchasing with a volume purchasing. The logic behind this proposed, proposed bill fails me. It potentially punishes the county consumers. It removes a million dollars from the county budget and would cost jobs, all because a few businessmen wanted a bigger piece of the pie. I find this motivation a tad shameful. Ordinarily, I'd be all for getting the government out of the way, but this is one situation where the government participation benefits everyone in the county, everyone, through the revenues, through the costs, and not just a few already well-established businessmen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Erdana.
Robert Miller, I too just wanted to encourage Sunday hunting. I contacted the state DNR and they said, go to your local, local government and have them bring it over to encourage state, statewide Sunday hunting. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How y'all doing?
Good.
So I'm not here to talk about liquor. I'm here to talk about Sunday hunting like these other fellows. We're trying to make it a little bit more easier for people to get out in the woods and hunt and deer hunt on Sunday. It's an antiquated law. It goes all the way back to colonial days, really doesn't have any business in, in today. It was only under 13 original colonies. The rest of the country doesn't do that. So we need to, it was also decreed by kings. So we're, we're America, we need to live by American rules. So I think we ought to just let Sunday hunting be a thing. Anyway, that's my two cents on it.
Mr. President, can we get the gentleman's name and the gentleman before him that spoke?
I'm sorry, the last two gentlemen, if you could state your name for, for the record for us.
It was Robert Miller.
And your name, sir? Daniel Nguyen?
Yep.
Any relation?
Hello, my name's Ryan Dye, and this is Logan Dye. We're here to encourage more Sunday hunting. He loves to go hunting with me, and we all have limited opportunities. And he is, he is a huge part of my life, and being able to have as much opportunity in the great outdoors as possible is just such a big deal for us. In the summertime, don't touch. The summertime, we're fishing all the time. We're out in the boat, we're having a great time. And in the wintertime, I have to tell him, no, we can't go today. And I can't take him out on the water in the wintertime. That is near impossible and dangerous. And that's our only other real outdoor activity that he loves to do with me. And so I just would love more opportunity to be out in the great outdoors with my son. And Sunday hunting is restricting that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Kerry Lewis, Wycomico County resident here in Wycomico County. I have a business, and I am definitely for the Sunday hunt. I really think it will be a good thing. These gentlemen have just come up here and talked about it. They think it will be good. I think it would be great. I've got a grandson, I've got grandkids and stuff. We've got Worcester County, Somerset County, other municipal counties and stuff is going. And I think it would just be a great impact to the residents here of Wycomico County to have that Sunday hunt. I think it'd be great. So I think it might be something for you all to consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
My name is Tyler Great. Like all the last guys, I'm here for support of Sunday hunting. I'm a local lawn care business owner, so I work Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. That doesn't exactly leave a whole lot of time for hunting during the week, and then I'm limited to Saturdays. That's, that's it. So we get a day where there's rain or wind or something where you can't really get out. I'm stuck for the week, not getting a chance to get out there, so I'm all for the, all for the Sunday hunting, so.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Reed Plaskin. I'm a resident for Wycomico County. And like the other previous gentleman, I'll let you guess, I'm also in favor for the Sunday hunting as well. The only thing I'd just like to say and add on is, based on how the seasons developed, when it starts in September and ends in January, if you look at how the fishing season is in play, it's allowed all year long and you can fish on all weekends. So I just don't see why it would not be practical while hunting season's in play to have all those Sundays accounted for. And like they've also, you know, brought up, wind, weather plays a factor in it, but I think more importantly, it's for a lot of the families here that live on the Eastern Shore that have that, that work the nine to five, it's good that they have two full days to do what they actually do and love and enjoy. So I'm very pro for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pete Roskovich, Adams Tap House. I'm actually here for Sunday hunting as well. And I agree with the guys. And the one man made a great point, that not allowing Sunday hunts adequate. And so is the dispensary system as we have it today. I've been in business for 32 years in Wycomico County, and if I average $1,000 a month, a week, in alcohol purchases, I've paid over $250,000 in additional revenue to the county in taxes. Now, that money could have been used for employee retention. It could have been to better grow my business, but instead, you guys got it, and I hope you spent it a great way. But moving forward, I don't think, Joe taught to me years ago about a blended system. And I don't know if all the pieces are in place. I know this process is, I know it's a big deal, but we've been, I've been in this for 32 years, and they always say, next year, next year, next year. Sometime, the year's got to end. It's got to stop. We've got to make a decision. We've got to move forward. But Joe had a great point. He goes, let's not get rid of the dispensary system. If you want to buy a case of Fireball from your distributor, go ahead. But if you want to buy a case of Wolfher Bourbon from the dispensary, go ahead. I went through with my manager today, and we went through products we would never buy from a distributor. We'd still buy Glenlivet and small-batch stuff always from the dispensary if they keep it as a blended system. And competition is not a bad thing. Right now, Glen has to buy from the county and try to resell it. So that's not helping the county. That's more, more money. Now, it could be a convenience, but Glen's buying a bottle for 10, and the county's buying theirs at 8.50. Now Glen's got to sell his for 12. So he's not helping anybody in the county. It's actually a convenience, but it's costing the county, county people more money than it would if you could buy directly from a distributor. And I mean, we, we haven't even talked about how we'd maybe lower our prices. And the man said, oh, if you buy in volume, you get a deal. We don't get a deal. We get a volume. We only get 15% off on one bottle, and if we buy 1.5, which is a gallon and a half, we don't get any discount. So we're not getting a discount. So I mean, maybe like, you know, saving any money. But my, my guy gets off work, and then he has to put a liquor, and then he drives to the dispensary, you know, twice a week. So he's driving 20 minutes, 20 minutes, costs about gas. He does it, and then he has to put the order in. It's, it's not convenient. My wine rep comes in every week. He could do my order, do my liquor order, and my stuff gets delivered. Saves us money, saves us time, and we move forward, and we have a better product for everybody. If Mike Visar got a business, I'm sure he'd merchandise the product. Great, and he'd work really hard to promote it because he's in business. And I'm not saying get rid of the dispensary. Those guys can work just as hard and make fair competition, fair competition against Glen, fair competition against Mike. It's capitalism, free market. Let's keep the blended system like Joe suggested. I think we move forward. Thank you.